Meeting of the West Kentucky School Board to order. The first thing I would like to do is have a moment of silence for all the victims of nine eleven. Thank you very much. And now we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
You know, what do you mean with please?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no additions or changes to the agenda except for I'd like to add a couple of discussion items. The I just want to add a reminder of the Wyoming School Boards Association Conference there. And that was it. Yes. Does anyone else have any changes?
Move to approve amended agenda second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose nay? Motion is carried. Recognitions. Who would like to start introducing our new teachers? Tyler, you're on the end.
You can do it.
We got a lot of shared we that we got shared staff. We're excited. Okay, sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, let me introduce a couple of new people to you back there. Um, first Kristen Giesinger, stand up and and hit parade. Um, little story about her, but we do what we always do, which is we get good subs and we then really like them and we make them a part of us. And then we hire them and that's why we have a sub shortage. So we are down one good sub, but we are up one good para in the middle school. She's a special education paraprofessional. And then Patricia Miller, familiar face to a lot of you guys. We also like to recruit Newcastle high grads to come back. Um, and I called her for a couple of years to recruit her to come back. It took a while and I think she's excited to be here and we're very excited to have her as a special education teacher in the middle school.
Awesome.
Excited to be here.
That's it for middle school.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, at the high school with us tonight, we have Ms. Morgan Lep. She joined us in January, um, but now she is officially, um, a part of our team here at the high school, teaching high school ag. And then a couple of seats over, we have Mrs. Erica Perringer. She's teaching ninth graders and eleventh grade in English. Um, again, a Newcastle High School graduate that has returned to to continue on a good teaching legacy. And then, um, at the high school, we have a new transfer as a sped certified teacher is Mrs. Lee Morrell. She's actually doing a train IMSI training tonight, and so she's not here to make it. Um, but I mean, just shows how committed she is right off the bat to to get going and get better for her students. So thank you.
And I'm gonna turn it over to you.
All right. So we just kept adding. Uh, we have Sarah Keeler and she's at our elementary school in the sped department. And then, um, district wide, we have a new OT, also a graduate Hannah Heeb. So.
I will, I will introduce her. She thought she was gonna get away with it. She's at our building most of the time, so we claim her. So we have Ashley Diaz. She's our new school nurse and we are very thankful for her. Okay, yes, I will recognize Becky Owens, though she's a new para. She's not here tonight, but another one of those that subbed for us and we now have her as wonderful para. So. And that's it, really.
We are very grateful to have you bring your skills, passion and talent to our district. So it's awesome to have you. And if you would all just come through and shake our hands, we'd appreciate that.
Glad you're here.
Well, we, we hope you all we hope you all have a great year.
You gotta go to the donuts quickly.
We were not really scary, so. All right. Visitors comments? Oh, I'm sorry, recog- yes, other recognitions. Yes, that did seem weird.
Thank you. Couple more recognitions if I could. Um, Brandy Marshall, middle school, high school art teacher. Um, I would just say when I was in a room the other day, really impressed with the the inclusive classroom that she's developing using high school interns, middle school students. It's just really awesome to see. Um, would love to tell you guys more about that sometime, but Brandy's awesome. Um, would recognize Leslie Morris and the middle school staff who gave up their Friday night last Friday for a successful middle school dance. Uh, we made it through with only a couple of tears and everybody had a good time. So that was good. Um, and then one other one is the tech department. I mean, I was just thinking of it this week. Um, but there was a time when I was a math teacher where this was about the time where we were checking to see if the kids could have their laptops yet or not. Like if they were ready for the students to use. Um, and where we're one to one from second grade up, we got new teacher machines, new student machines, new devices everywhere and just how smooth things go at the beginning of the year. I would give the tech department a huge shout out for all that they're doing. And that's it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Other recognitions? Would you pass that down this way?
It was an incredibly long day at the elementary school. I can't even stress to you how long.
Hey, I do have a few. I would like to recognize Rehab Solutions.
And the Lodge, they donated some school supplies and came and delivered them today. We've also had several individuals who have donated, um, money to buy supplies and they've asked not to be publicly recognized, but we do appreciate that support. So. Um, also, I'd like to recognize Erin Pazinski and Sonya Tisdale and then our entire testing team, which is our general paras and then our Title I teachers. Uh, for testing and digging through all that data and getting it ready for us this week. So we could do that. That's a pretty big feat to get all of those children tested in both reading and math. So appreciate it. That's all I have for us.
So, anyone else? Yep, anyone? Yeah. All right. Yes.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to recognize or introduce of the Student Council Vice President Taylor Conklin and the Student Council Secretary Celine Remore.
Welcome. And if, and if she ever has to be absent, you can always send one of your colleagues to cover. We glad to have any of you and all of you. So thanks for coming. Are there any, um, visitors' comments? I don't see any. All right. Action items, the consent agenda.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried. We have no old business. Next up, though, is an executive session under Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five I X to discuss a legal update. It's been moved and seconded to enter into an executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose nay? Motion is carried. Bo will have it set up here. All right, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. New Business Special Education Handbook Preferred Practices. Oh, sorry. We'll do that again.
Hold on, just a minute, Madam Chair. I think everyone's in the waiting room. Well, I don't know who's in it.
Not for a handbook. We don't have to. When we rewrote it, we when we asked them to change it, they brought it back.
I didn't think we did three readings.
Amending it is different than three readings for policy.
Policy.
Yeah, there were some things we asked them to change. And I think we're gonna call this meeting back to order. And we are gonna move to new business, the sped handbook preferred practices. We are.
Um, Madam Chair, I would recommend to the board, uh, the approval of the Special Education Handbook along with the Preferred Practices, Expectations and Resources, which are included in your packet.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this Special Education Handbook Preferred Practices, Expectations and Resources. As for discussion, um, Taryn, is there anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not necessarily unless you have any specific questions. Um, I worked with a school law group and they went through the draft and they really picked through it to make sure it really matched up with IDA and chapter seven here in Wyoming. Um, so I'm very thankful for that collaboration.
And it's my understanding, um, the attorneys are, the board attorney got to see it today.
Our board attorney?
Allison was able to see it for in the packet.
Oh, it's in the packet, yeah.
Yeah, that they hadn't seen it before today. Does anyone have any questions? My only question is, is are were there substantive changes from the way it was before and then who all was involved?
So at the beginning, the version you guys saw last year as a draft, it was all one document. And then when I sent it to KSB Law, they said to keep it very clean, to make it into two documents. So you have a very law, legal way. And then how is your district going to make sure that you are complying with all of those? And so that was really the big piece of our practices and making sure that we are in compliance and how are we going to keep each other in compliance? So all the same information just now in two different documents. So I think it's gonna be a little bit more user friendly. Yep.
Anyone have any questions? No. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried. Revisions to the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Okay, so I might need some help with this one, but I have two. One of them I'm going to take blame for. The other, I'm going to do the old fashioned thing and blame referee. Um, but anyway, um, in your packet, what we would like to recommend to the board are the revisions. Um, the first one is due to the homecoming. Um, I believe it was started by the idea that the referees um, could only make it on Saturday. So that was moved. But in the spirit of trying to make sure all students can attend, what we'd like to do is move the parade day from Friday to Thursday. And then making the Friday, uh, early out for both, um, students and staff. We can do that now that we changed earlier in the year. We changed the hours at the elementary. And that gives us flexibility still with either late starts or hopefully snow days to come. The other one is, and this is my air, so it makes that, um, December twentieth, uh, a early release for both students and staff. On the current calendar, it just says students. And then I would ask about some help.
I think he means you, Bryce.
Um, with the homecoming changes, um, as you know, homecoming is typically on a Friday night. The state is having a refing shortage at some point midsummer. Um, our refing crew called and said, we need to play this game on Saturday. And you're kind of stuck. Um, Alicia did do some hunting for some other officiating crews to no luck. Um, so we're kind of stuck with Saturday. And then in this process also, we found out that regional cross country was this week as well and on the Friday of homecoming week. Um, when we picked that calendar, you know, whenever we chose approve the calendar last year, we didn't know that at that time. And so figured since homecoming was already a little bit messed up with the officials moving, um, I think it'd be nice to involve as many kids as we can in the parade process. Um, just because that is kind of a big event with homecoming and thought since it was a weird year anyway, what if we did the parade on Thursday? Um, just so those kids can be involved before we send them off to regional cross country. So that was, I guess, the, the meaning behind the request.
Student, student council good with that? Jason?
Bryce, when you said that you didn't know this, the, the schedule at that time, is that something, do we need to move our voting on our schedule to, to accommodate? Or is that just something that just happened that they just didn't get us that schedule to coincide with our schedule?
Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure how it, how it happened and where the miscommunication came in. Um, we're gonna make sure we have that information by the time we have the schedule this year, though. It'll, it's gonna be a one time thing. Yep.
Really? It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions for the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. Administrator, superintendent and board reports. Bo, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, just a couple, uh, upcoming, uh, projects and stuff. I just want everyone to be aware of. So um, we are adding one more door reader down at the elementary. It'll be a reader that'll go into the kitchen. I'm, I'm getting quotes and whatnot for that. Um, I would say the big project coming forward over, um, Christmas time, we are swapping out half the fleet of the printers and moving new ones in and then updating firmware. So over that two weeks, we'll be pretty busy with Marco and, and getting, uh, firmware and new printers. Um, and cycling out some of those that have, uh, heavy use. And then, uh, today we just wrapped up. We had, uh, three of the speakers out at the field were blown. Um, and we did swap those out and those sound really good now. So.
Excellent.
Unless, any questions, I guess?
Joe?
Just got a quick question about the project you guys were doing for the football field with the light system.
Yep. Um, like you said, um, we're still getting, um, donations and stuff. I think what I need to do, especially now that I'm coaching, I've kind of ran out of time. So there, there are quite a few grants that I'm gonna apply for. There's the Daniels Grant I'm gonna apply for. And there is also one through, um, an energy grant, which gives money to K-12 schools looking to move from halogen lights to LEDs, which is exactly what we're doing. So I'll sit down, um, when I get some time and get those. And I'm hoping that kind of gets me where I need to be to move forward. So. Yep. That's about the only that's not new really out there. It, it looks good. I think everything will be good.
Awesome. Mr. Bart? Yes?
Guys, just a second. Um, I should have done this under recognitions, but I was just thinking, so in preparation of trying to get the field ready, um, Adam and his crew came in and, and mowed, uh, the field on Sunday. Don't scowl at me. Um, just like high school days there for a second. Uh, and I want to thank him and his crew for that. And then Bo hurried up and, and we, um, or the machine and he um, got it all striped and ready to go for the middle school game, which was for not, but it, it looked really good. And I believe it's ready to go for, for Friday night.
Looks great. Saturday. No, this one's Friday. This week's Friday. That's homecoming is Saturday.
My calendar spells Friday.
All right. Tyler.
The new store. This is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootleggers liquor, the deli. The food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
All right. Tyler.
Uh, not much. I would just invite anybody, if you're looking for a, uh, free trip to Gillette next Wednesday, we're gonna take all our sixth graders on our science field trip over there to the planetarium and Makerspace and everything else, but that's on Wednesday. The sixth graders will go with Mrs. McCormick. Uh, and also on Wednesday, if anybody's looking to get the miles in, we're gonna go hike Black Elk Peak on Wednesday with our eighth graders. Uh, I, however long, if you guys remember, we used to do that in the spring as part of the Outlaw Ranch stuff. We moved it to the fall. Weather tends to cooperate a little better. Hopefully it's not this hot, but otherwise we'll be good. But if you guys want to come hike, we'll take some chaperones that way. Um, and then, yeah, I would just once again tell everybody that we need officials. We need officials in middle school and JV and those kind of things. So if you're interested in learning, Bryce will teach you. And that's it. Unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions? No. All right. Alicia, do you have anything? All right. Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, nothing really. Um, the football field, we're gonna try on Friday, as Brad said. The elementary playground starting to sound like a broken record for five weeks now. The guys told me he's gonna be there Friday. I talked to him on the way here again tonight. He's supposed to be here Friday. I, I don't know. He'll be here when he's here, I guess. Um, we're kind of at his mercy at this point. Um, other than that, I don't have anything. Unless somebody else has something.
Yeah, I, I think the field's looking really good. So thanks for putting in the extra time on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I feel like I was just here, so not a lot of new things to report. Um, excited to host the first football game on Friday night, so looking forward to that. Um, also starting the first round of drop-ins, getting in teachers' classrooms and starting the evaluation process for the year. I'm loving everything I'm seeing right now. It's been really good, um, to see the energy that our teachers are bringing and also the students, how they're, how they're doing. I'm just I'm seeing a lot of maturity in all of our grade levels here this year. That is, that's really impressing me and I think we're just gonna have a, a great year.
Excellent.
Thank you. Um, as I said, it's been a long day at the elementary school. We finished up our data meetings today. So we did them all last week and then today. So that's a, a big thing to get out of the way. So we know where kids need to go and, and to do our interventions. So. Um, and then also I'm planning Mallow right now. So it's at the end of the month, on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, we have seventy-six fifth graders going between us and Upton. So you're all invited to come up and check out what we do. And if you'd like to be night help, we really need night help on Wednesday and Thursday. So there's that. And then, um, I wanted to give you a heads up and, and kind of a recognition as well for Connie Heeb. She has been doing the Watiki Challenge for, since the last time I talked to you guys. And she kind of finally just put her foot down and said, this is what we can afford if you want us to come make it work. And they did. So yay, we will be going to Watiki in May. Um, and I, I had mentioned earlier, the reading counts program that we use to do that uh, actually is no longer available. And so she did also go find another program that's very similar. And so we will be able to continue that. So a lot of hard work to her and, and it's appreciated. But other than that, we're off to a great start and yeah, they're wearing me out. So that's all I have unless you have questions.
And I, I will say that few times I've gone by the grade school when the thirty mile an hour light is flashing, people are slowing down. So I was really happy to see that. Of course, a couple of them were behind me. They probably might not have if I hadn't been driving twenty-nine, but I was.
I have noticed a difference. I think the traffic is slower, um, which is good. I was telling Bryce earlier because he keeps track of our time for dismissal. We have been backing up quite a bit lately. It's not from anything that we're doing or any processes that's changed. We're actually loading pretty efficiently. We just have a lot of kids getting picked up right now. So that usually happens at the beginning of the year. So we're hoping that'll kind of even out here as we go.
Excellent. Taryn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we're starting off the year serving about a hundred and forty students on IEPs and five oh fours. And so those are some coming in from the Children's Center. We had a couple move in, um, in each school. So we're just getting those acclimated. And we're almost through all of our five oh four annual meetings and we're amping up for our big hall of October IEPs because that's when a lot of them happen. Um, like I shared with you, Karen Hossi was able to come in. She's a school attorney, um, specialty in special education. And she got to meet with all three of the buildings and then she met with the sped crew separately so that they could just really dive into some questions. And um, she talked a lot about least restrictive environment and child find and, and just the different discipline procedures for students on IEPs. And um, it's always exciting when Jenna teachers are asking a lot of questions and, and then the sped teachers can be in that collaboration with them. So it was, it was a really good day. Um, we have coffee crow up and going. If you need a coffee or Italian soda, there's a special of the week every week, um, that those kids are doing. And graphics and vinyl is already printing shirts. I mean, they're flying off the press. So if you need some doggy gear, get ahold of graphics and vinyl at the high school. So that's all I have for you.
Jason?
Do you know the hundred and forty-three, how does that stack up to the previous years as far as numbers? Do you, do you know kind of offhand?
So it's, it's pretty even, actually, right now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Angie.
I don't have much, Madam Chair. Um, just Paul, the auditor, will be here the first week of October. For her, our audit, our annual financial audit. So, um, Adam and I are going to a a major maintenance summit tomorrow in Cheyenne. It's for K-12 safety. It's all new to us. So, um, I was, the project manager had gotten ahold of me and said that it's something we probably should attend and be good information and help with some funding, hopefully. So down the road. So.
Is that with the facilities commission?
Yep. That's all that's going on in my world. If there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Well, we know we're going to talk to Denise in a little bit. Haley.
Thank you, Adam Chair. Um, I have a couple of things to report. Our doggy trap shoot tournament was approved by the Weston County Sportsman Club for Sunday, October sixth, if you guys would like to mark that. And so we're currently advertising for teams of five and we have prizes for different categories that we're still thinking of. And so our goal is to raise around four thousand dollars to split evenly with the F B L A chapter. And then Mrs. McKay and Mrs. Yu are sending fourteen students to the Fall Leadership Summit on September twenty third. And the last thing I have is at our meeting, we are forming committees and working out the details for homecoming. And that's on Tuesday, September seventeenth at six thirty in the library, if any of you guys would like to come. And that's all I have.
What was that date again?
The seventeenth.
So do you guys meet every other Tuesday?
Um, so we meet the first and third Tuesday of every month.
Okay. Thank you. I went last year once and it was fun. Made me feel young. So that's never bad. Troy, do you have anything? Okay. No questions for Troy? Mr. LaCroy.
So just a real quick follow-up. Um, Adam mentioned this. Um, one of the things that was brought to our attention is to try to improve. Um, some egress at the elementary school and it dealt with the commons. Um, and mainly it's after hours. So what we're going to do is we're going to be able to put a, um, Bob reader in there. So at night, if somebody needed to hurry up and get out, it, it would allow an, uh, another way out. That currently is, is locked up. So, um, that's what that's in reference to. Um, this is sort of a, a big thank you, but, um. Bryce has been working with one of our, our scholarship donors and hopefully at the next meeting. Uh, he'll be able to roll out the, the new Don Thorson, uh, stems slash career tech ed. Scholarship. Um, so there'll be two, two scholarships, one in, in Weston Seven. And one in Newcastle for the stems and the same with the career tech ed. So he's working with that. Um, and I got to tell you, and most of you have already been here, but, um, the grand, the grandfather thing is pretty cool. Um, although we're not to the point where they let me play, um, very well with him yet because they don't think I have much discipline.
No comment. All right. I have a question. What, did we have a, a donation to the woodshop? From someone more familiar?
So, um.
Don't think we have recognized that.
Um, and I don't think it's actually been in the newspaper, but yeah, Barb and Pat Crow. Um, generously donated, um, to the career tech ed shop area, I believe is how they worded that. Uh, a gift of sixty thousand dollars. Fifty thousand? Angie's happy that I don't do budgets. Um, but anyway, a very generous gift. And, uh, the first place that you'll see it is, um, the old, um, shop tables that had the cubbies underneath. Um, are now almost like gorgeous butcher block tables. Um, and they're open and, and, and really pretty well thought out. So, um. And I think they're working on other projects as we speak.
Excellent. So, thank you, Pat and Barbara. All right. Any board reports? New meetings? I'll be going to Douglas for nine, nine, nine AM meeting on Friday. And for Wept and hope to be back in time for football. So that's all I have for that. Future agenda items? Just a reminder, our next board meeting will be on a Tuesday, September twenty fourth. All right, discussion items. Volunteer activity drivers.
So just real briefly, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't think I explained myself very well. So really the main intent was just to let the board know that, um. We may not have actually a need for the volunteers, although I'm sure Troy will, will take anybody. It's. It's that, um, in the swim program, when the coaches. Um, and teachers and whoever else, they'll be paid a bus driver wage at the same time that they're gaining. Um, a teacher wage and then, um. It's sort of the triple dip, but it's the only way to make sure that we can get kids to and fro right now. Um, and then Troy's still actively, um, working at putting those things together. But truly, the biggest thing I think in front of Troy is, is like the day that you have the big field trips. You know, so you, it's all good for kids, but that's, you know, you wait for the routes, then you have to be back before the routes go and da, 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 da. And then, of course, with this ever-changing scheduling, which I think is just going to start really with. It's just not going to be a football thing. It's going to affect basketball. It's going to affect wrestling. It's anywhere that you have referees and with the shortage, you're going to have to sort of go when they can, they can go. Um, and that's going to make an even bigger challenge, but, um, really it was just to let you know that. Those individuals that, um, will be driving those trips, not golf. Because remember golf right now is under, um, the club, not, not with us, but down the road. It would be handled the same way. So you'd have a teacher missing class. Um, getting paid as a bus driver and getting paid as a coach, um, so that we can get students to those activities. And we had, we had a pretty good discussion on how that would work and, and if people get upset. Um, truly, we have quite a few openings that, that, that we could use them in multiple areas.
Yes. Anyone have any questions? Have anything you'd like to add, Troy? To that, okay. Thank you. Alicia.
Question on how it would work. So for example, the swim team is going this weekend. They'll swim in Warland on Friday. And then they'll swim in Powell on Saturday and they take two Suburbans and their two coaches are driving them. Stay the night, swim, and then the coaches drive them back. So how do we go about paying the coaches as bus drivers? Do I have them do a time sheet? Do, like, what do I do? We didn't pay them.
I thought as a board, we voted on paying them the bus driver wage, right?
Yes, like as far as Teresa, she's an hourly employee. So she, she got paid for the hours she drove. And then because she has extra duty for coaching, she gets paid hourly for the coaching. And then she didn't, you know, it was separate. So she drove for three hours, coached for five hours. Next day did the same thing. So we kept that separate and she got paid for all of it, um. Activity wage and then her extra duty hourly wage.
So what that means, what, what I'm hearing you say is, is we have our extra duty. Set amount for coaching, but then the actual hours they're driving, then they'll be on.
So does Rob fill out a time card, an hourly time card?
I would think that would work though. Okay.
Any other questions regarding volunteer bus drivers? Guess they're not really volunteer for paying them, but it feels like they're volunteering to help us out. So. All right, Denise. You're up. We have asked Denise to come. Um, so that we, uh, to answer some of the questions we had about how many people we're feeding and, and. What it's costing and, and this is our, our first, uh, deep dive into seeing if, if we can do our own meal program.
Um, Angie has the financials on what we take in from the state and that kind of thing. My part is this, trying to stay in compliance with the state because we do get audited this year. And those kids will throw you under the bus so quick that. That sounds cool. Um, the things attached to the back are the program that I use to get in compliance. Wherever you see all the red marks, there's a, a lot of compliance. The C stands for calories. Um, I have on the front how much sodium they can have. Sodium is the biggest. Thing. Next year, we will take another dive in sodium. It'll go down even further and they will start on the added sugars.
Okay, so what you're saying is. The. One lunch for, I'm looking at nine through twelve, ages fourteen through eighteen.
Okay, so that's middle school, high school. They can have between six hundred and seven hundred calories and one thousand two hundred and twenty-five grams of sodium a day. Now they do average that out by the month. If you have a high so, or by the week. If you have a high sodium day, you know, then you're, or a high calorie day, you have to. Come within that week average because that's what they're going to look at when they come and. Do our stuff. Like if you look at the first paper behind it. You can see I was out on sodium, trans fats.
Okay, wait, now which one are we on?
The high school one and the first, this is the first week of the menu.
Like September sixth?
Yes, September second through September sixth.
Gotcha.
So those just tell you our averages of that week, where we're at in the thing. The red boxes mean we didn't do very well.
Madam Chair, so do you know what next year, what they're going to drop everything down to?
I do not know the sodium levels yet because they're still kind of arguing back and forth on whether it's going to go through or not. The added sugars. They're starting with yogurt. Cereals, things like that. And I want to say there can only be so many grams and so many ounces. I mean, it was. Most of our yogurts are going to have to go.
I, I, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll start this, um. I, I was the one that asked to look at this because, um, as we all know, eight hundred calories for an fourteen to eighteen year old is. Hardly anything. And then six hundred for six fifty or whatever for a five to ten year old. Um, I know it's probably not going to be a favorite of people, but I would really like to look at getting away from the government funding. Because to me, we're doing a disservice to our children. I mean, this, some of them, this is their only meal they get and. I mean, if you look at it and not saying we need to feed them a bunch of fat, but. When they can't have seconds and they can only have a couple of things on the menu, I, I don't, I don't agree with it. So. Thank you for putting all the work into this and keeping us compliant, but that's kind of why we've talked about having this.
Give out the extras seconds because truly it's supposed to go in the trash. I mean.
Yep.
I can't do it. So we do give it out.
Yeah, no, and I understand why waste it when you got kids that want to eat it. But that's kind of the background on this because like I said, I mean. I've had several parents reach out to me and, you know, we're willing to pay a little bit more or whatever, but I really truly think we're doing a disservice to our children. Like, and it's not, you know, your guys' fault by any means, but the restrictions are just going to keep getting worse the way it sounds. So, and I don't know. It's got to be a nightmare trying to plan a menu.
It is. I mean, we're halfway through September and I don't even have October's done yet, or I think I'm on week one still trying to figure out.
Paul.
Um, and I need to commend you. Looking at this, it looks like you did a pretty good job of staying really close, even though you were just that much over. So congratulations on that. But it sounds like it's going to be worse even next year. So trying to meet with. The compliance there. What, what happens if we're out of compliance? The compliance there. What, what happens if we're out of compliance?
What they tell me is that they can take back state money. I've never seen them do it, but they can pull back all the money that they've paid us.
So.
For our reimbursements.
They can threaten us to take the money if we don't hit these ridiculous goals that they continue to lower the bar on. It's not any good for our kids and it certainly doesn't sound like it's any good for our employees. Right. That are trying to come up with this hassle. So there's got to be a better way. I just, I don't see how it can.
Angie Koke and Upton, because they've walked away from the program. She said it's worked out well for them. You know, I don't know. If they have open campus or what they have, but she said so far it's worked out well. The problem runs into like the donations of beef because I have to order commodities. Like I'll order for the twenty-five, twenty-six year in January is when I will have to have all that. Into our state. So it makes it really hard because I don't know. You know, the last two years have been great in beef donation. I don't know what's going to happen. Next year, you know, and that's when I have to order all that stuff.
So my question is this. What? What are the things that you get through commodities? Do you get everything except the beef that's provided or?
I usually order my beef through there because I can get that a lot cheaper through there. Most chicken stuff comes through there. Um. You know, it's a back and forth. Like, we have a salad bar every day and the state says you have to take so much. Vegetables. I mean, it has to be on your tray. It all goes in the garbage, you know? Before twenty years ago, when I worked here and didn't have these guidelines, you put fruit out. If they wanted it, they took it, but the ones that took it ate it. They didn't. You know, so you're giving a half a cup of that to every kid and it's going straight into the garbage. So there's kind of the given.
So take. I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, what are the things that we would have to pay for? If we stepped away from the commodities?
Probably all your chicken products. Beef, I think we're probably good for on a couple of years. You know, of course, if you're not with the state program, we can use more.
Right.
Beef too. So I mean, we would go through it quicker.
So the commodities just provide meats?
No, there's fruits and stuff, but I can get that just as cheap through our company. So I try to use our money for that on meat products. Because that's where your cost comes in.
Okay, so. We would, so we're. We would only, I guess. We would only have to come up with a way to buy like chicken, pork, whatever other meats you wanted.
And the stuff that we buy now, like your french fries or whatever. I mean, that's all bought through Cisco and.
Okay, so that would be made this say.
Now, I mean.
Right. That's, that's what I was trying to figure out is how much, I didn't know if it included staples, cheese, dairy. But if we're paying.
That I do get through commodity. Some of it, we can get what they have through the co-op and we get a pretty decent price. And from what I understand from Angie Koke is you can stay with the co-op buying from system for the food prices on the bids.
All right. So there is, there is the food co-op that is separate from. That's what I was wondering about. All right. Billy?
And didn't last year, Angie, didn't we have some troubles with the commodities too as far as access and getting them, availability?
And already I've, like breaded beef patties, haven't been able to get them since the start of school.
Okay.
You know, in most years, it's not a big deal. You can flop stuff around. But when you're getting audited, you have to send everything to the state on your menus, the labels off of everything you're using and stuff. So then when you have. But when you're getting audited, you have to send everything to the state on your menus, the labels off of everything you're using and stuff. So then when you have to. Suddenly flop, you still have to make sure you're in those guidelines that week that you're going in and they don't tell you till a couple of weeks before that week of which.
Okay.
Week you're sending in.
So I guess this one's more for Angie. Um, do you got the numbers in front of you?
I have.
What do we receive a year for lunches?
What we get for reimbursement from the state for lunches and breakfast was with a hundred eighty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-three cents.
Okay. And um. I'm wrong, let me know, but don't every year we pretty much have a outstanding lunch balance too? Do you know what that is off the top of your head?
The, the money that I put into kids' lunch accounts, I did a little over four thousand dollars last year.
Last year.
The year before it was closer to seven.
Okay. So I mean, it's, it's costing us.
And that money come from where Brad and I have gone out and solicited.
But even though we get, even though we get a hundred and eighty-four, it's costing us more to feed the kids. Do you have? Any idea roughly what it would cost us? Two hundred?
Well, in direct food costs, we, last year we spent a hun- over a hundred fifty thousand in direct food cost. And on commodities, we only spent nineteen thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars. Um. Wages were two hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred twenty-three and the general fund had to cover about thirty-six thousand of that. You know, we got. Just under seventeen for supplies and thirteen hundred on other like dues and fees that. We obligated to pay for your run program. Yeah, I, I, I would think.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I, I appreciate you guys doing this and really working great with what you got, um.
And our commodity dollars come from the prior year, how many meals we put out, that's how they decide how many dollars you're getting. And about nineteen to twenty-one thousand is generally where it's dropping every year.
Jason.
Billy, do you think it would be worth us? Having a meeting. Prior to the time that she needs with stakeholders to see what. They possibly would be willing to donate for that year to kinda give her. An idea of what she needs to do on her end, do you think that would be a?
Um.
A good idea or a possibility?
I, I don't think it would be. I mean, you never know if she's got a, you're already ordering for twenty-five, twenty-six, right?
January and February.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard telling what the following year is gonna be like for some of the ranchers. I mean, we've been pretty fortunate right now. I can't guarantee that we're gonna get ten to twelve beef a year, but. Um, I'll agree with what everybody said, we have a very generous commu- community. Um, I don't see that we won't ever. Get any kind of donation either money wise or beef wise, but yeah, I, I don't think we can ask ahead of time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, John.
So we're spending, and I, I'm just rounding up here, about a half a million dollars a year on our food service. So if we went. Without any donations, that's what it would cost us, the school district, a half a million dollars.
We're only, we're only getting reimbursed a hundred and eighty-four though, right?
Right, from the state, that's what we got reimbursed.
That's all we're getting from the state, so.
So I mean, I'm, but I'm just saying it's what it's gonna cost without any reimbursement or anything, it's a half a million.
And some of the cost you'll be able to bring. Way down just because you can do other things. You know, with your meat and stuff like that. I mean, you can go back to a lot of the. Home cooking stuff that's gonna go a lot further.
And so is. That hundred and eighty-four thousand from the state is all of that tied to those requirements?
Yes.
Every bit of it, okay.
Okay, I, I kinda see where John's coming from, but I guess I want a little clarity. It's costing us a half a million dollars for our lunch program. But we're getting only reimbursed roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand, so it's still costing us three hundred and fifteen thousand?
And two hundred and some is.
Two hundred some of it is wages.
Wages and benefits.
Okay, so, so realistically. And I'm sorry, John, but I, a hundred and eighty-five thousand is what it's gonna cost us because we're already happy to come up with the. Three hundred and fifty, correct? Is that, am I reading that right?
Well, I guess my question, what, what, what would the total budget be for the food service and it'd be half a million dollars?
Between four hundred and five hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just using that. So the total cost of the food service is gonna be a half a million dollars. And I realize that. Part of that we're getting paid for, we pay for right now anyway, but, but, yeah. I mean, as you go down the road and, and you do your budgeting process, you're gonna have to figure at least a half of, half a million.
And if, if we were able to tailor it more to what kids would like to have, we would probably have more. Coming in, I mean, we'd be spending more, but we'd have more money coming in.
I would have to probably say if we go more that route, we're probably gonna need more staff because we're serving breakfast until eight-thirty in the morning. And then we have kids, the high school, I think, comes at eleven-ten, so you've only got those couple hours to get your lunch. So you'd almost need another person in each kitchen to come in early to help start lunch. Earlier.
So you're saying a lot of this is semi-prepared?
Most of the stuff that we have now is pretty much prepared.
That's how you can't.
Because of the, I mean.
Control how much sodium in, in it and stuff because it's pre-cooked, gotcha.
You know, condiments are horrible, usually most years, like I don't care. This year, if we have good audits, I don't have to do it for five years again and I'll be retired. That's my whole goal. Otherwise, we have to do it in two years again.
So would you guys um like to invite some folks who have done this to join us on Zoom? Um, at an upcoming meeting or, or come in person, or would you like to go? Organize something where we could go visit? Um, and see what they've, you've already spoken with folks in Upton, would you like to?
And she, I mean, that everybody was more than welcome to come up there and.
Dana, go ahead.
My finger. Any idea how many meals Upton? Prepares?
Did I tell you?
I guess all I'm trying to, I mean, it's comparison with us, number wise.
She gave me the numbers and I didn't write them down and I honestly cannot remember.
And so when we say state money? And then we talk about a federal program, I wanna make sure I get this right. If we walk away from the federal program, that is just the state money you're talking about.
Correct.
Okay.
And the commodities.
And the commodities.
The, the department administers the federal funds.
Well. I just wanted to ask you after talking to whoever in Upton or. Do you think it would make your job easier if we stepped away from them? Would it, would it make your job easier?
Make it a lot less stressful.
Well, and I mean, but.
I think it would be good. You know, our kids, we're dropping kids right and left, they're just not eating and I mean. And some of them, I mean, some of it, I don't know if it's just the stigma of school lunch because the exact same hamburgers we serve, they serve at Maverick, they come off the same truck, they're the exact same thing. They'll go down and pay five ninety-nine for that one hamburger.
But they can put ketchup and mustard on it there.
That's true.
I mean, but you think it would be a, a gain for us to step away from it then, I mean.
I don't know, I can tell you twenty-two years ago when I started over there. We served a lot of kids. You know, I think at that time we probably served. Well, at two hundred. For lunch and we probably did close to a hundred breakfast. Now at high school, we're lucky if we do eighteen breakfast and.
Thirty lunches, I think I saw thirty some lunches.
For high schools.
For high school. So we're not, we're not getting fit kids. We're not getting kids fed.
Now, I can't give out the ketchup and stuff, but there is absolutely no rule that they cannot bring it into the schools and put it in their locker or. Whatever.
I got a good man elected president of the middle school student council with you. He brought salt for everyone.
Did you have some price?
I was just wondering um for free and reduced lunch and. How that ties into all this because there are quite a few kids that utilize that, so I didn't know if. You guys know about that at all?
We do and um Upton still does their free and reduced. Um, our free and reduced kids, that's part of that hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we get back. I mean, that's where that money is coming from is on those. Lunches. So it's still gonna fall in that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I still think you need to offer that and I don't think if you, if you do get away from this program, you're not getting away from the free and reduced. I mean, I, you still gotta offer that, I feel. And uh, I know there's some bigger schools that have done it, um Glen Rock's one of them. Kinda compares size if we're gonna, you know, size wise. So yeah, I, if we can talk to some other groups and, I mean, I'm not saying jump, do this right away, but I would really like to look into it and. See what options we can explore.
I know the other big fight right now is all I can get is lactose-free milk. That's all I can get off of our truck and that's a big fight right now and.
Wow, it seems like those little containers of milk were like the cornerstone of what you had at school.
Chocolate on Fridays.
For, for your break and your lunch. That seems crazy, you can't get the little milk.
Well, and I mean, they still come that, but. You can if you, like, we can't serve over a one percent. Milk and now. I could get it in a two percent or something, but for school rules, we can only get the lactose-free right now in the one percent.
Wow.
So. So you're saying that if we walked away from this, we could, I mean. Because I know um, like, there's shortages for everything, right? And so can we get those things if we walked away from this program? Like, could we get? Normal two percent milk or what have you? Can we get? Chicken patties that we want? Can we get all of those things or?
We can, I can order them through Cisco and they're still in the co-op.
Okay.
Pricing range, so none of that would, it would just be the stuff that I actually ordered from the state, which they call brown box.
Okay, um, so then my next question is, so I mean, at the very least, we're looking at replacing a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Out of the general fund. So, I mean. My thought process is, is I think it needs to be certainly something that we talk to the community about. I mean, maybe not necessarily before January or February, but I think it needs to happen that way, um. Just because that's, that's a, um. That's several teachers, you know, that's a, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, or I'm not saying, I mean, because look at how the beef thing worked out. I mean, who knew? Not me. Um, and so I, I get that, but I certainly would wanna proceed cautiously just because that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And that's a lot of, of money that. W- we would be having to get from somewhere in the general fund. And so where I think it, it would behoove us to maybe look at. Wh- what are our options? Because I just don't, I feel like it was pretty tight this year and so I just don't know. How we would, where we would come up with that money. But I, but. Certainly, I would, I mean, I would definitely be interested in looking like Glen, Glen Rock or Douglas or any of those schools that are actually doing it that are closer to our size. Because I think it's just a different ballgame when you're talking that many kids.
Great. All right, so our, our, what would you guys like to have as a next step? Do you, do you need more information? Do we want to contact those folks and, and have, spend some time with them? Jason?
Madam Chair, I guess I would recommend that we as a board. Get, get with them. Like I said, you guys just let me know, I'll make the call to the guys. Um, but I think we as a board get with them first and then once we kinda have an understanding. Um, go with Tina's idea and set up a, a town hall and ask them guys to come back on. And that way the community can hear from them, you know, in case we can't really explain it as good as they can. They would be in Zoom or in person and they can, you know, answer any questions that uh. That. Parents have or whatnot.
I would really caution if you walk away. To make sure that's what you wanna do because if you have to go back to the state, they're not gonna be nice coming back. You will jump through every hoop that's ever been. Set up.
Hmm.
Just because it ticks them off when people leave.
All right, anything else on food service? Thank you so much, Denise. This is very helpful and.
Thank, thank you.
Because, you know, we've. No, there were numbers flying around about, you know, no one could ever have over five hundred calories and, or no one could ever have over four hundred and fifty and, and. And I wasn't even aware of, of some of the levels you have to meet, so. I, I appreciate all this information and we're gonna keep this handy.
Okay, so thank you so much, Jason.
I guess if we wanna do that, Madam Chair, I'd ask if I could get a couple, two or three dates so I can relay that to them. They'll give them more options to. Find a good time for them, if that, if that's what we choose to do.
Yeah, we can.
I would, um. I, you and I will talk about. Just probably will give them. After the, a few dates in October and November. All right, uh, the School Boards Association Conference is November. And I know one person has responded to email. And you, you did, okay. I'm going.
I am still checking my work schedule.
All right, don't, don't forget to let CeeLo know so we get the discount for early, early registrations.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website. NewsLJ.com and in our weekly email newsletter, New Canow. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newsLJ.com and subscribe today and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
All right, don't, don't forget to let CeeLo know so we get the discount for early, early registrations. All right, and that, that is the other thing is I know. An email went out about uh the football field and there wasn't a lot of response from the board, so please do check your emails and, and please do respond when. Even if you don't have an opinion, just please tell the person emailing you that you did see the email. I think that's important. Um, so we can be communicating as, as much as possible. All right, just, anyone have anything else? Jason does.
Um, I guess Madam Chair. In light of the recent school shooting. I know. That, that school district had the program that we, that Gilbert and I brought forth to the district. They utilized that mapping system. Right, right, but it, it was the same concept, um. I guess I would like to get with Gilbert again and get with that individual and I'd like to. Look at that again. I know.
Describe more of what you're talking about.
So it was a system that. Helped law enforcement. Pinpoint. Where the threat was, so we're not starting, for example, at the middle school and working our way to the high school. You can go to this map and the map will. Literally pinpoint it's in this corner in this specific classroom.
So and is that based off the cameras we have? So and is that based off the cameras we have? Or?
Do you remember? Can you?
Um, yeah. So so what it would be is um the I wish I could remember the what they had in Georgia. I can't remember. Um. But it actually prompted me to send out an email reminding all our teachers. They are, we have the the lanyards they squeeze and it shows us on a map. What I liked about the one that you showed us is there was a whole messaging system behind that. Um. We have our own messaging that we set up. It's not tied to that. But essentially our mics, if you squeeze our mics, it'll light up the room red and it'll also flip the camera on. And those also work on the playground too. And they can be off. They can squeeze them and it'll just kind of put a circle about where where it happened. Um. But like I said, the the one I really liked with the one we saw back in the spring, correct? It it had a messaging system behind it. Like the one in Georgia, it was like squeeze it six times if you needed administration and squeeze it eight times if you need law enforcement. And when I read that, I was like, man, I'll you ain't gonna be counting how many times you're gonna be squeezing the button. But it did. It had a map and it had a messaging system too.
And I know at that time, uh we were trying to get other entities to to join in, which would cut the cost. I think what we need two.
Yeah, in my conversations with Gilbert, um, we were gonna sit down and he talked about possibly, and I wish I could remember the lady's name. Was a really good grant writer. And that was where we left it. He was gonna maybe talk to them about trying to get a grant for the school and the hospital to cut that that initial cost. Um. But I had, that was probably the last time I've talked to him.
Yeah, well.
The first school used sent a jig.
Sent it. Yep, that's yep. But again, like I said, it just, you know, that's something we as a board have. You know, people have come to us with concerns and we've addressed different things over the years. And, you know, again, the the previous conversation, you know, a hundred and eighty-some thousand. I think this was a a little bit costly also, you know. So again, every every little thing adds up, but like I said, in light of what happened then, I mean, I I like to really revisit that again and just, and I don't know if that ties into the the thing you guys are going to as far as security or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll find out more.
So, you know, and then like Bo said, you know.
I mean, truly, I think that's part of the purpose of the meeting is to to try to talk about where where we are as a state. So if you do have different responders at different times, not everyone's using a different kind of a system. Um. But that's definitely something that it may not be on the agenda, but you could add it to the agenda tomorrow, I'm sure, as they they talk about how they're gonna use that that money and 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 facilities and and how it all ties together.
And maybe if anyone else is using it, you could see what they're use, see what they're using and.
Yeah, I think he said there was a couple, three or four districts, if I remember. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But like I said, I just at some point like to revisit that again, just to.
Well, maybe these guys will have something to tell us when they come back. So we'll we'll ask you to report on that meeting next time. All right. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Sorry, my radios or my mic's always off. I apologize for that. Um. It's not necessarily something we need to vote on, but I do think it's something that we need to revisit, because I do not think it is fair for Therese to get hammered about facility usage. Um. I think what we have is good. But it's gotta be equal for everybody. Now, I'm I'm a basketball guy at their basketball gyms, but guess what? Soccer is just as important in Newcastle as basketball is. So it's gotta be equal is what I'm saying. Um. Other than that, Therese, go ahead. Tell us what Teresa, tell us what.
All right. People call me Therese too. Oh, so I just, you know, we voted on it, I think twenty twenty-one. We have new board members. And I think I said in the leadership meeting, people don't read it until it applies to them. And that's what happened this year. And so I just wanted to make sure that what I spilled out is correct, because I did have some staff that thought E W C should be below kids' sports. And so I just want to make sure that what I put forth was what we talked about back in twenty twenty-one, because going forward, I'm gonna put it on the website. And I'm also going to send a letter out to staff every year, reminding them. So if we have new coaches and such, um, to make sure that they're clear, because I am trying to be fair. What's frustrating for me is when I try to abide by what the board directive is, they go other places to try to get what they want. And so that I just wanted to make sure we're clear. And so I just wanted to revisit it and make sure everything was good. And people have to bear with me. This year, we have a new reg- reservation system and I'm having tech- technical issues. So I'm trying to approve them as much as I can. But the one thing I did want to talk about was middle school. Um. We can divide it. And um, I guess soccer for school sports can use it in middle school. But um, the policy was soccer had to stay over in the practice gym unless they were twelve and under. So can we move that to fourteen? That may help. And then I can put basketball in the doggy dome. Because basketball and volleyball were able to go over there and that would give me the space I need. As I do know, um, when we voted for doggy dome use, five thousand of rec board money got pulled aside to redo the floors. And so, and I try not to use the doggy dome unless I absolutely have to. And I think the conflict would be fifth grade basketball is after this fall group. And winter sports, that's when we, we have seven indoor soccer teams. And we have one open soccer high school. They all want to use the gym.
Mr. Sherman.
Go ahead, Brad.
So, two things. Um. One of the things that was always sort of an unwritten rule is high school groups during other high school events um, weren't allowed to have open gyms or open courts or things of that nature. Because it pit kids against kids um and actually hurt numbers. Um. That was just a practice in the past. And the other thing is, is I think when we look at just the middle school gym, I think with this much of a demand, which is all good for kids, I think instead of looking at three gyms, you have to look at six. And everybody just simply has to go east to west instead of north to south. Um. That that gives you way more gym usage. Um. You don't have screens like you do in the middle school. But for some sports, um, you just sort of have to deal with what you have if you want to be indoors. Just two thoughts.
Um. Which sports are wanting open gym?
Uh, in the winter. So in the fall right now, uh, wrestling has open mats from six to eight at night twice a week. And high school boys' soccer is requesting open gyms twice a week, starting November until their season starts.
November.
No- November, I think it was eleventh or sixteenth.
And then their season starts.
Ah, I think like the first week of March.
That's five months. That's a lot. Okay. And that's it.
Right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just side note here, did we ever let, or I guess, I I don't know if that was a question, but is any of these indoor soccer teams, the littler kids going to the elementary school?
I have four at the elementary school.
Okay. So you still have seven that are wanting?
Uh, well, seven including them, but I also have E W C volleyball. We have pickleball. Um, so there are those events too.
So you're just asking for, we had a kind of unwritten rule for twelve and under. In middle school, you're just asking maybe if we could go fourteen and under.
Yeah, like we'll keep high school soccer over in the practice gym because they kick harder. And then if there's a conflict with basketball, I was like, I could move them over to the doggy dome.
Okay. I guess Adam's not really here, but do you see an issue with changing it to fourteen and under using the middle school for soccer versus twelve and under? You see an issue with that, Brad?
I don't know enough about it to to make that kind of a decision. I would say this, under the rental agreement, anybody that has any damages are responsible for those damages, period. Um, because we did have, you know, a couple of years ago, it was just one of those freak spring storms. Uh, baseball needed to go inside. Somebody put the baseball through the sheet rock and the baseball group said, sorry, but we'll pay for it. Um. So if um, I think moving forward, if there are damages, um, believe it or not, I don't know if I'm worried as much about the sheet rock as I am those darn um door openers. Um, you know, people want to use those as swing sets and and that's nickel and diamondous more than than sheet rock. Um, but um, that's a supervision issue. But again, if there's damages when it's your turn to have it, then your group should pay for those damages. I think it puts responsibility where it should be.
Um. I guess I don't see any problem with moving it to fourteen. Is that something we would have to vote on or do we just?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll just move it to fourteen and.
And I just wanted to make you guys aware too, in case community members come and talk to you, you know, about things. I think the new system, once I figure out how to use it, will be really, really good. Um, it's it's got a lot better communication. They can actually get on it and look at the calendar and see if it's available. And it will not let me even schedule it, like, because Diana and I have to work with with things, so. Yeah.
One more question on how far out can you schedule gym use?
That was my question. There's really nothing set. And my fear is because, you know, for that last group, it's first come basis. Now, the clubs won't get approved until I have insurance, but an open high school person could literally end it March third and put a request in March fourth.
So, not to be the board historian here, um, but generally what we tried to do, um, and we had some degree of success, is that was your spot until you decided to move your herd. In other words, it was just sort of gonna be there um until you would come to Teresa and say, I'm not gonna use that spot anymore because my kids have all graduated and somebody else has taken the program. So open that spot and then away you go. Um, cause if not, you're right, you're gonna, you know, how how often do you want to shuffle the deck? That's probably the question. And then it becomes, I mean, that's a management issue. So it would, what works best for you, because everything's gonna be good for kids. And we've already heard that. So what works best for you? Do you want to have a two-week open enrollment?
Well, and I've I know that there's also infighting within groups and coaches, um, because they are separate teams, even though they're part of one organization. And that changes year to year with coaches. So I almost think every year they need to submit a request.
Yeah.
Um, because they have to put their teams together. What I don't want, um, and this would be probably more for open gyms. And why do you talk to them is, okay, what are your numbers? I don't want somebody plugging up a gym for two hours and they got five people, four people, three people coming in. Because that has happened in the past. And I remember when I was hired, some of those coaches and a lot of it was staff would put a traveling team together of five and plug up the gym for two hours. And that, I think that caused a lot of kerfuffle.
Billy. I I guess this is question, I don't know if this you could answer it or not, but so like the high school boy soccer team is wanting open gyms in the winter when their season's not going on. So do they automatically jump to the front since they're the high school first? Or do we let clubs? I mean, if they're in season, I could see letting the high school.
So it's it's club organization. Right now, the status is is club organizations and open non-seasoned school facilities are the same. They're treated as first come.
Same, okay. So they're in the same category. So I mean.
The E W C is actually in front of them.
I just was making sure that the if it's on not season, the high school.
But I do have, I have had coaches say, no, I'm a school sport. I get priority. And I had to say no and.
And and I agree with you. I think they need to request it every year. I mean, if we gotta put, if it gets to be too big of a hassle, you know, you can't request it, what, sixty days before? Or whatever, I mean.
There are some that, and these would be not sports so much, like um, the community concerts, April, because they have to book those. So that would be an exception. Um, some of those things do have to be a, you know, six to eight months in advance. But auditorium isn't really a high, like, usage facility.
Okay. Is there any other direction you need from us or moving forward?
I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page before I get my letter out on the website and.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm pleased.
Okay with that. I'm still okay with it. I just, you know, having the backing of the board for something that you guys put forward, that's what I'm paid to do and I don't mind it. I can take people being mad at me. I'm not worried about that. I try to be diplomatic and I want to be kind. But I'm also, you know, trying to be fair with everybody, so.
Perfect. Well, unless anybody else has anything. All right. Meeting adjourned.
Yes, thank you guys.
The ones that start slow, but boy, by midseason, you see something. And by the end of the year, they're the scary team. Nobody wants to play. Those are more fun than the teams that come in that you know are gonna dominate and they are dominating. You know, you're almost afraid to lose when you've got really, really good teams and high expectations.
Oh, for sure.
Those are fun seasons. Is there that potential in doggy sports this year for some of those programs?
I think it's possible. Um, you know, could be.